Ask him.
Have that conversation right here. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have anyone attending virtually? I don't think so.
Mayor Mitchell, Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilman Best.
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Bahet.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Thank you all. Stand please for the invocation by Councilwoman Bravo.
God of, God of wisdom, we seek your help today. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of this evening's agenda. Reveal problem areas and show us the best solutions that will apply. Dear God, help us apply your wisdom as we decide on certain matters and make plans. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All join us, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome to our November fourteenth meeting. We're going to get started with awards and presentations and under this, we have a very honored guest. Today, and I'm sorry, this is my fault. I didn't realize he was coming to this meeting. I thought it was our December meeting. So I would have put him on the agenda because I really wanted our residents to know that our new County Commissioner, Kevin Cabrera, is here to join us and we want to welcome him, introduce him to our city. So if you'd like to come back, also again, another time in December, you let us know and we'll put you on the agenda. So our residents can be sure to be tuning in and also watch and get a second chance or at the beginning of the year, you let us know. So Commissioner, welcome. We're honored to have you represent our city. And we all look forward to working with you for the future of Miami Springs and Miami Dade County. Thank you so much for being here and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, the Council and City Manager Alonso. I appreciate your hospitality. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. And like I said, like when you, when you reached out, it's a pleasure to reach out. I'd let, you know, I want to make sure we meet with all of our cities and work as accessible as possible. Because ultimately, as, as we've said since day one, it's about helping people. And we want to make sure that we are a resource to not just the city, but to its residents and make sure we are available. We're attentive to all your needs and we can continue serving our, the residents of District Six. And again, thank you for this welcome. Looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you to my good friend, Councilwoman Bravo. I appreciate it. And thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We greatly look forward to your leadership and representation, Commissioner. Okay, so our next item will be the Artist of the Month. And are those up? They're coming up right now? Okay.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like they're on their way.
A lot of people downstairs.
Yeah, yeah, it's the Springview Elementary.
Neighborhood, our neighborhood school.
Okay, welcome. This is our Artist of the Month that are displaying their beautiful artwork for City Hall. We're very grateful in Miami Springs to have the opportunity to showcase your talented work. So you make our City Hall beautiful, interesting, a nice place to visit. It gives residents a reason to come by. And there's, let's see, six of you that did the artwork or there's more of you that did the artwork. Is our teacher here? Hi, come on up, come on up. Mr. Acosta.
Yes, there's sixteen students as fourth and fifth grade.
That's wonderful. And, and so can you tell us about the, the work that they did? What medium and?
French artist, self taught artist, Henry Russell.
Wow. It's really lovely. And while you're here, because I know some of you were downstairs, I want you to have the opportunity to meet our new County Commissioner, Kevin Cabrera. If you wouldn't mind standing, Commissioner, just so everyone, this is an opportunity. He was just elected. He's this past week. So we're looking forward to, to his representation and he'll be representing all of you at the county level. So thank you for being here. Let's take a photo if we can and also with the Commissioner.
Yeah, some.
Okay, so we're going to move to open forum. We have one person signed up to speak. Connie? Yes, sir. I am, yes, sir, under awards and presentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our actually Vice Chair right now, Vice Mayor, yes, Vice Mayor, right now. He happens to be our Vice Mayor now. Victor, Dr. Victor Vasquez, and he has some words he'd like to say. We're going to miss him. This is his final meeting, so we're going to miss him greatly.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council members, Commissioner, guests, staff. On August twenty-third, I ran for the position of Miami Dade County Commission, District Six, of which Miami Springs is a part of. I decided to do it because there was a vacated seat from term limited Commissioner Rebecca Sosa. I ran for the purpose of being able to bring even more resources to our cities as well as a fair share of our county taxes. I did not prevail in that election, as you can see, but I gave it a good run. To run for the position of Commissioner, I was required to resign from Miami Springs City Council as indicated by the resign to run Florida state law, which prohibits elected officials to run for another position if the terms are going to overlap. I set my last date to leave council as November twenty-second, next week. And I wanted to share with you a few words tonight. First, I want to thank the Mayor and Council members. I want you guys to know how much of an honor and a pleasure it has been working with all of you for these past nineteen months. Even in the middle of campaigning, I attended every council meeting and met all of my responsibilities and then some. To the City Manager, Clerk, all the staff as well as our legal counsel, what a delight it has been to support the work that you do always in the best interest of our city and residents. To my supporters, thank you for your kind words and inspiration. And to all residents, thank you for the honor of having me serve as one of your representatives. Finally, as I've done before, I became a councilman and throughout as well as in the future, I am at your beck and call to help the city in any and every way possible. I love Miami Springs, as does my family. My youngest children have grown up in the Springs. We are springers for life. Happy Thanksgiving to you all. I know I have much to be thankful for. God bless you and your families. Yours truly.
And I would just like to say on, on my behalf, since we're doing it now, I thought we were going to do it toward the end of the meeting, but I think this is a much better time is. It's been a true honor and pleasure. Dr. Vasquez, working with you and, and serving with you on this council. I know that your, your vision and your goals and your caring about our community is uppermost in, in everything that you do. So we're very blessed to, to have you, have had you here. And I feel very blessed to have worked with you on this council.
Thank you.
If there's anything else or anyone else wants to say right now, or if we'll leave it for the.
Sure, yeah, through the chair. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's kind of a bittersweet moment, isn't it, in a way? You, you've been, for nineteen months, you, you've been at it and you, you finished with a, you finished with a, with a bang running for County Commissioner. I give you credit for that. It was not an easy thing to do. And seventeen percent of the votes, not shabby partner for the District Six. So I've certainly enjoyed working with you. Unfortunately, under sunshine, we could have maybe got into these issues a little more heavily, but unfortunately, we're bound by that and, and couldn't do so. But that's okay. We talked about the National League East and football and this and that and everything else. And, and I've certainly enjoyed having you sit up here with us. Thank you for your, thank you for your time up here and your, your service to Miami Springs, Dr. Vasquez.
Okay, um. Let's go ahead then to open forum. And we have Connie Rodriguez.
Hello, good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Connie Rodriguez. I'm a Girl Scout leader here in the community. I just saw, and we'll see y'all on Friday with my Girl Scouts. We are planning on a wonderful community event on December seventeenth, collaborating with Lennar's Realty, who's Charlie. We're wanting, we want to celebrate Christmas in the Springs. So basically the event where we would request if you could close off Park Street so we can set up craft tables for kids. We're gonna have, Charlie's gonna rent a trolley that'll drive around the community. So we want to do some holiday fun within the Springs to do maybe like Plover versus Oriole. We'll see how that goes. But to promote, you know, the holiday decorations and just have like a good holiday spirit within the community. So I'm here just to request to see if we can close off Park Street so that way the kids can participate and, you know, do different activities, have hot chocolate and things like that. So that's what I'm here for.
Okay.
What was the date of that, Connie?
December seventeenth.
Seventeen.
Yes. I do know that is the same evening as the golf carts parade with the city. However, I spoke with Caitlin. She said it's at six to six thirty. And our event's gonna start around six PM and, and the last run will probably be nine PM. Okay, so just, yes, sir.
Just to clarify, park from?
Right across the street from, from City Hall. By the Women's Club. And the Women's Club doesn't have an event that night as well, so.
So it would, it's just that street, the Park Street.
Okay, we want to close off the street so that way the kids can just have a good time and not have to worry about oncoming traffic.
I'm just trying to understand, is the park in front of the Women's Club?
Yes, that little, yep, before Grace Lutheran.
Yes.
Yep, right there.
Yes.
So if you could just work with William afterwards, thanks for letting us know and, and it sounds like a wonderful event, anything to, anything that encourages, you know, our residents or provides another opportunity for our residents to enjoy our community and be outdoors together and it's wonderful.
Yeah, we're hoping to set up a tradition, just something fun to do and just something that people can look forward to and part of one, why we have such a great city.
Wonderful. So Connie, if you could just work with our City Manager with William after.
Tomorrow, we can talk.
I can send you details. That's fine. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair, Connie, before you leave the well, I just got to say to those here and those at home, how wonderful and rewarding it was on Veterans Day for the Girl Scouts to be out there. They had donuts, they had cakes, they had coffee, they had, you name it. And, and they consistently support the veterans every year. And I'd like to personally thank you for that. I already have, but I'll do it publicly now.
Yeah, my dad's disabled vet, so that's one of our ways to pay back. So.
We do a wonderful job at it.
And it's so many things, Connie. I know you're always available. You, your Girl Scouts are always available to assist the city at every event. I remember when we did ice cream. That, that they just offered, they said, we'll do the toppings. You know, we were having ice cream, I guess, summer ice cream at the rec center. And your girls came and, and offered to provide toppings and just made it so much more fun and so many things like that that you, that your mothers and, and your group of, of parents, because I know it's the parents, you know, making the commitments for these kinds of things is, is wonderful.
Yeah, we're planning, but I'll, I'll work with Omar and maybe Public Works, but we want to plant citronella plants too at the, some of the parks as well as one of our Take Action projects. So those are the things as well, but that's like down the road. Okay.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye now. All right, so we'll go ahead and move to approval of the council minutes for October twenty-fourth and October twenty-seventh, October twenty-fourth, regular meeting and October twenty-seventh, special meeting.
Good chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve number six A and B.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any discussion? Call a vote, please, Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Bahet.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell. Yes. The motion carries. Okay, the next item is we have reports from some of our advisory boards and commissions. The first one is from an advisory board update from Fred Gonzalez, the, from the Recreation Commission Board. Hi, Fred. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for inviting me. So I just have a few notes. Not an elaborate speeches the last time I was here after our first meeting, but we have met about four or five times. I'll talk about the meetings in a little bit, but one of the, I just kind of want to give you the highlights from the five, five times that we've met. One was discussing Rio Vista Park, which I think you guys are all familiar with. It's an interesting parcel of land. It's got a couple benches and a light. I drove by it on the way here, but it's also got some residential that's very close by.
I'm sorry, for the benefit of people that are listening that may not know, can you explain where Rio Vista Park is?
It's on Royal Ponzianna, just past the dog park, like if you're traveling north. And it's just a very small triangle piece that you probably pass by and think it's just somebody's, it could be a couple people's front lawns, but they're not. It's actually, it's got a couple benches, a little walk path, I think. We wanted to come up with some ideas on how to make that a more passive park, but a more inviting park. We talked about gardens that could be used for, you know, school lunches, things like that, school projects. We also talked about, talked about adding a gazebo structure there, much similar, maybe a smaller version of the one that we have in the circle. Kind of like our signature here. Maybe if we create more passive parks, they all seem to have gazebos of different sizes, colors, structures that could then be rented for parties. It could be rented for activations or just a nice place to get out of the sun. So that was one discussion that we've had about Rio Vista. We also started discussing strategy for the tennis courts, racquetball courts, which have been top of mind, I think. We all know the racquetball courts over by the tennis courts are not necessarily in the best of shape. There was a suggestion to move them to Stafford Park, but we've also felt that that wasn't necessarily the safest location and tucked away in the back corner. With the walls, the way they're configured could be, could lend to some safety issues. So we're still of the mindset that we feel it's, it's a better solution to move the tennis and the racquetball courts to the golf course and to make it a true racket and golf center would benefit the restaurant, would benefit the city, especially with the soccer stadium that's coming in and it's not going to be a golf course over there. And then in that, also by doing that, you could then, in the current space where the tennis courts are, you could create another passive park, perhaps with another gazebo structure and something that would, you know, could facilitate a younger audience. You know, toddlers, young, you know, younger children. It's got good shade over there. It's got good, good space, good, you know, decent parking behind the library, could be activation space next to the library. So that was among our discussions. The third thing, I just, we met with someone who mentioned about pickleball. It's a rising sport. We just don't know if we have the numbers here in Miami Springs that are playing it, although there are other areas, Miami Lakes, I think in Hialeah, where they do have some courts and they seem to be getting very popular. But it's a something that you could easily facilitate within a racquetball tennis court structure, again, at the golf course space. The biggest challenge though for our, our group has been the fact that we still don't have a chair. Our chair resigned and we've yet to appoint a new chair and our meetings have been staggered. Sometimes we, we meet, we don't have enough to make a quorum. We have to go or we'll, we'll have enough, but we don't seem to ever get that momentum that we really had at the first meeting. So I'm hoping that we can meet more over here in the next year more regularly, not with three month gaps. So we can really start hammering on a vision and a plan. We really feel like the Parks and Rec, Omar Luna need that, that, you know, ten, twenty, thirty year plan that we want to help, you know, put together, get the city involved. We think it's important. And we know that the grant writing is going to be important to that. We know that we just had a, a grant that we were looking at that we didn't get for the exercise facilities that we were going to put on along the western drive, along Curtis Parkway, I should say. And you know, it brought up some concerns, you know, if we don't own the land, if we're leasing the land, then can you actually get the grant? You know, does it become a loophole to not get the grant? They think PB Park and, you know, do we own Stafford Park? Do we own those land? Can we actually get the grant writing done? How can we work around that? So there's going to be some challenges there. But we can't do that if we still haven't appointed a chair and we still are meeting every three months and hoping that we can get something together. So, you know, we have done some good things. I mean, I will say the scoreboards are up. Thank you for that. It's a little.
They look great.
They look great. We used them a couple days ago. Can't thank you enough for that, Computer Electric. We know that shade structures are perhaps something that's close to the horizon. You know, I know there's been talk about the batting cage and creating safety. So we are thankful for that. And we know that things can move quickly. But I just feel that, you know, this is a bigger, this, this isn't just one park that we're talking about. This is a bigger project. And so I feel like we need to get our foundation a little bit more settled to really be able to make an impact in twenty-three. And that's about it. Through the chair. So it's a matter. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's, it's a matter of, you, the rec commit, the, the rec commission is shy one appointment is what you're saying. But we have, we, we need to appoint someone, but it's also, we have four people.
Erica, Erica, who, whose seat is it that's open, that's vacant?
It was Council, I'm sorry, Jorge Santin. So I don't remember who.
He was, someone replaced him. There was someone new that was brought.
Yes, because he, I think.
He, he, he works the, he works the running.
Right, Fred, Fred is mine.
Yes, that's who I, right. So, no, there's an appointment, there's an empty seat.
No, I don't think there's.
No, there's. No, that's what I thought.
To be the chair and then we need to just have better attendance.
Fred, what do you think? Because this is what you're saying is unfortunately not something that that's unusual. We hear it from other advisory boards. I know the Educational Advisory Board is the same thing. No one, you know, is willing to be the chair and, and, you know, we're greatly indebted to the residents that want to serve on the advisory boards because there's no compensation for it. It's, you know, your valuable time spent working on, you know, city to, to improve city issues. So we're greatly appreciative of that. But do you have any idea, since it's not unique to your board, it's, it's something that we tend to have and Erica can just, and even getting, you know that you can meet more than three times a month. We, there's no, nothing that limits you from meeting monthly or twice a month, if you like. That's not a limitation. What I think what we had put in is at least quarterly, that the boards would meet no less than quarterly because we had a few years ago where boards hadn't met at all for, you know, a number of years. So we had said at least quarterly, but by all means, you know, you can meet more than that.
Well, I think, I think that is a, a fact that wasn't necessarily made clear to any of us.
Oh, okay.
It was mostly every time the meeting's over, okay, the next one will be.
Okay, and so we need.
The fact that, the fact that you can do it more often should be.
And I believe you, you have newer members on the board and so they probably weren't aware of the change.
So perhaps we can get that out to all our boards to reinforce that, that.
I didn't want to say that we don't have a chair. It's like, there's someone that I know very well that would like to be the chair, but we just haven't all been together to vote for the chair. And I think you have to all be together to vote for the chair.
Can I ask a question?
I would.
Surely.
You should put that on the man, that should be mandated for your next meeting officially. I think it's been mandated the last two meetings, but you didn't have enough. We did, the second meeting prior, we didn't have a quorum. Somebody didn't show up. And then the last time, me a culpa, I failed to show up. I was at my daughter's softball practice and I realized that I missed it and I was, even though we had changed it because of the storm. So that's probably.
And I believe, and I know sometimes. Be present to a point.
To a point. And I know sometimes with our advisory boards, even if they have a quorum, like the City Clerk's office, Eric and her staff have confirmed that there's a quorum at the last minute. Someone calls and says, I can't leave work, you know, I, and all of a sudden, you know, I was planning to be there. I'm not, you know, and at the last minute and, and residents, you know, people get upset because they go, it's posted and everything. We have no control over that, you know, everyone is, is serving, you know.
I think once we get a chair in place and then we can, it'll help because then perhaps that chair will then say, okay, we need, we need, it'll set the agenda. But for right now, it's, we've all been, you know, grabbing the ore and making sure.
And I asked what might be a silly question, but, but maybe if not, like having it always available. But like in a meeting like that where you need everybody in order to appoint a chair, can some people get on Zoom? Is that allowed for an advisory board? Because I know that in talking to some people that are on some other advisory boards, I think that that's a typical complaint is that because one or two people can't make it, it all kind of falls apart.
Two members, if it's a five member.
Right. If some people could get on Zoom, I think that that would facilitate these meetings, getting them in the books, right? So and particularly, particularly if you need everybody for a vote, like I think you guys should leverage that if, if it's a possibility.
As long as you have an in-person quorum, that's what matters. You can have at least three. You can.
What would be?
I would need physically three people.
Three in person, but others.
Right. And just so you're aware, the board previous, I know, because I, as I mentioned, there are new members, they had selected the quarterly meetings because we, we left it up to the boards, obviously for, for scheduling and, you know, just accommodating them. That's why the quarterly meetings were.
You're still, we have too much at stake and we have so many things that we could get done that.
It's so important to us, you know.
And we're at a, we're at a tipping point or a crossroads where you look at other parks and you look at what they're doing or even just from a safety standpoint or the facilities or just up, updating, you know, a lot of our stuff still feels like it hasn't been updated. Not that we don't want to, but it just hasn't become a priority.
I think one of the things too is I want to emphasize and then I'll let Councilman Best speak. But is emphasize that we want your input. You don't have to wait, you know, till now, when, you know, we ask you to make a report yearly, after every meeting, you can submit to us recommendations through our City Clerk's office of, you know, we would like the city to.
Okay.
You know, some of the things, absolutely, because that'll move it along. I think it's still kind of where the, the boards and the city council operate in these parallel universes sometimes. And, and honestly, you're there to provide us with your recommendations and there's no time that, you know, the recommendations have to be presented. If they're presented after a meeting that you just. Provide us with your recommendations and there's no time that, you know, the recommendations have to be presented. If they're presented after a meeting that you decide is something to act on now. Through the city clerk's office, that should get to us and should be on the agenda. You know, for the next item, um, one of you can be here to talk about it, or it can just be something that's, you know.
That's great to hear.
In writing and, and we can move these things along. Um, Councilman Best?
You're still president of Little League, Fred, right?
Correct.
I think you'd be an excellent chair for that activity.
Did say I knew somebody very well.
Let's make the decision for you.
He's been serving as the de facto.
Just a, they fat, well, he's here, he's reporting.
That you decide you have to meet every month for now because there's so many things on the agenda and down the road, it's, you know, every two months or some, that's. Uh, there's nothing on there. What we want is at least quarterly that the.
Yes, well, I, I think we need to be monthly at this point to get. Something to you. And then at that point, like you said, it might dissipate a little in the summer, but.
Okay.
If we really want to serve the residents and come up with some great ideas that we can have momentum with, I think. The quarterly is just not going to work and we just need to.
You definitely have our blessing.
Next year. So I appreciate all the update and.
Yes, sir. I think it's a great idea, Fred. Thank you for the whole work that you do. Um, you know, there's no limit on amount of ideas that you can recommend. And how quickly you can recommend them because this way it really gets the juices going, the conversations and some ideas may be a little later on. Some could be, as the mayor said, the next, uh, the next council meeting, but it also um, gives the members of the board, right? The, the, you know, the idea, the support that we're listening and we're giving back feedback, you're sending feedback and that's the way it's supposed to work. So I congratulate you for that.
Perfect.
And there may be some things that don't even have to come to council. There may be issues that are discussed at the recreation board that, you know, or something that. Just our city manager needs to know about so that he and our recreation director can kind of resolve or address or, you know, and they don't even have to wait to.
Our recreation director's been at all the meetings, I mean, most of them. So he's, and he's there and he's getting peppered with a lot of questions. So I wouldn't say that we're, that we don't feel like we're informed. More, it's more the reporting and coming up with, you know, what's next. It always felt like we're waiting for the what's next.
Okay. And I, and I think everyone here will agree with me. Um, you know, Councilman Best, who's been here so long. That some of the best ideas, some of the best things in the city have been ideas that have been brought by residents, you know, to the council over the years, and I don't mean just this council over the years. And, you know, they've just been like, oh, okay, we'll start doing that. So. Um, we're, you know.
Fred, at the next meeting, just get somebody to nominate and call for a vote and be done with it.
We could work, we can work it out.
Get two people on Zoom.
I think mayor, it's, it's also important doing budgets workshops, to have all of these ideas.
Yes, yes. Our budget workshop is every August. So um, that doesn't mean, you know. Of course, things that are very pricey, there's just, you know, they have to be into the budget.
Well, the scoreboards are an example of collaboration. Yep, right. So there's more, we could do that, but a lot of different. Things, a lot of different ways.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for it.
Thanks, Fred. Thanks a lot.
Okay, and our next um, report is from the Adjustment Board of Adjustment Chair that is unable to attend.
Okay, so we'll leave. To the December meeting and I have ecology, historic and parks and parkways also for December and as well as the report from the task force is scheduled for that meeting as well.
Okay.
It'll be before then.
Yeah. Okay, so um, thank you again, Fred, and, and thank on behalf of us, the advisory board members, all of them. Um, the next item will be uh, public hearings for. Um, we have three or four ordinances, well, three ordinances and resolution. So Heidi, can I have a public hearing? We don't have anyone signed up to speak. Right, Erica?
No.
For the public hearing? Let me go ahead and open it anyway, in case.
Read the ordinance title for.
Okay, okay.
Items eight A and eight B, um, Eddie Wen from the Cordino Group is here to present on both of those. So if we want to bring him up while I read these, um, I'm going to go ahead and read both ordinance titles together since we are having a presentation from Mr. Wen on both. Um, but we will need separate motions and votes on both of those. And then the items eight C and eight D are also companion items and we can hear those together once we've dispensed with eight A and eight B. Eight A is an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, amending the city's comprehensive plan by adopting the evaluation and appraisal report, year-based comprehensive plan amendments. Providing for transmittal, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Eight B is an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, adopting an amendment to the water supply facilities work plan. Providing for transmittal, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. These are ordinances on second reading, um, and I know that Mr. Wen will. Get into it, but the, the revisions on second reading for item eight A. Come as a result of the state's review of the city's year-based amendments. So you may recall that Mr. Wen explained. At his first presentation that these um, proposed revisions would be sent up to the state as is required. That was done. The state responded. And so with that, I'll let him make his presentation.
Thank you. Uh, for public record, uh, Edward Ning, uh, technical vice president, playing division for the Coridino Group, four zero five five Northwest Ninety-seven. Avenue three two hundred to Ralph, Florida, three three one seven eight. Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for having me back here. Uh, we're pleased to uh, progress along with this. We know it's been a wait. Um, now that we know the comprehensive plan involved two uh, uh, um, readings in order to take effect and. At, you know, you know, it, uh, the policy document will cover the minimum of the next ten years, which actually lead to some of the uh, comments we got back from the uh, the, from the EO. Um, all the changes are consistent with what we've had so far. Um, I'm actually going to go into some of the changes just from a public record standpoint so that. You know, I know it's hard sometimes when you get a new doctor, like what actually has been changed? So we received a uh, ORC report, which is a standard document that we receive from the EO uh, after first reading, you committed it, uh, it's due in sixty days and we received this report on October twenty-first. Um, so we turned around pretty quickly. Uh, you're given at least one hundred and eighty days from that time to bring it back for a, a, a second reading. We got three comments on that. I'm really pleased to note that um. The comments were um, prefaced by that none of these were, would result in actual objections, which is. Important distinction because while I've never personally received anything that said it would be objection, I have come in after the fact where it, the wording was a lot more stronger and said, if you don't fix these. It will lead to objections uh, down the line. So, but we took a look at the EO comment and we agreed with their recommendations. Um, the first comment was on the property rights element, um, uh, and looking at the um, the actual wording and they recommended that uh, we, uh, the city. Uh, change the proposed amendment to reconsider private property rights and all the cities local to uh, decision-making per the statutes. Um, and with that, we would recommend to the council that we uh, strike the word planning and development. And leave it at the city of Miami Springs will make decisions with respect for property rights and respect for people's rights to participate in decisions that affect their lives and property. The second uh, comment we received regarded uh, uh, with the new guard to planning horizon, noted the ten-year horizon uh, a bit earlier. Um, while we all understood that the planning document is for the ten-year horizon, uh, the, we. Reap back out the DEO and they advised us that what they really want us to do is actually took explicitly stated. So we uh, 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 are recommending additional tech that you see underlined, uh, plan horizon and maintain these goals for the city shall be twenty forty with the standard from other plans we work on. Um, and that you um, uh, the city to maintain land use density at levels without at minimum. Uh, be sufficient to accommodate growth for a twenty forty planning horizon. We also had to change the maps date that the city had um, publicly from twenty twenty-one to twenty forty to reflect this uh, planning horizon. And lastly, because state law uh, requires you to maintain a five and a ten-year horizon for your transportation data, we've uh, are recommending a change in transportation element. Uh, 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 policy as written to provide for the five and ten-year uh, um, uh, a planning horizon as required in the state statutes. Um, we also note that the plan horizon with city transportation system will be twenty forty, did it uh, in line with the practice of saying that the city's planning horizon will be twenty forty to. Reinforced in multiple places uh, under these recommendations. A third comment had to deal with internal consistency. Before we were updating both planets at the same time, they uh, 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 they had to go back and look at the uh, consistency with those documents and I apologize, but uh, we, we, we managed to. Recombine them so that they're inconsistent uh, at this point. I should know also that um, we ran all the changes out of courtesy review back to the EO and they're kind enough to expedite that. Uh, courtesy review and noted that uh, they wouldn't have any objection for the changes uh, uh, on a courtesy standpoint and that it should resolve the comment. Uh, uh, in that courtesy, from that courtesy view standpoint. Our action items, we uh, recommend that uh, that, that the uh, council approved both the water supply plan and ear uh, based amendment as uh, amended through the second reading. What will happen from this point on is uh, we'll transmit the approved amendment for the state coordinate review process under the second submittal that's required. We can only do that after we have a signed ordinance though. So once I have a signed ordinance from uh, the city clerk uh, with the vote count, I'll be able to draft a letter and provide for an actual. Um, uh, uh, submission to the state. That uh. Uh, what happened is when the state received this, they'll give us a specific uh, written letter indicating that they've received it. An acknowledgement from the EO then start the beginning of a thirty-day period before the amendment take full effect. Now, this is important as well because uh, the city hadn't updated its comprehensive plan in a while. And so any action to take subsequent to. Uh, uh, um, you know, without uh, uh, amending the comprehensive, bringing compliance doesn't really take effect unless these changes take effect. So. Your, the council can still take action on other items. It's just that it has to take effect in order for the other changes to also take effect as well. And with that, if there are any questions, I'm uh, please to uh.
Just one um, through the chair. Uh, so this is, this will be with, with, with approval with, with the signed document, the ordinance from the city clerk to you. Uh, that'll be transmitted to the powers that be and it'll be a living document until twenty forty. That's what I understand, right?
The document itself, yeah, would be a living document until twenty forty. Um.
I tell you, man, uh, going, going through all this and reading is a, it's a couple of hundred pages. The lawyers must have had a field day with this, boys. What an exercise in semantics, I tell you.
Yes, uh, we, uh, we know they tend to be long. Uh, I, I've been tasked from uh, with some other cities with reducing a document from six hundred pages and I think I got it down to one fifty.
Pretty sharp machete.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, thank you for your efforts on this and, and uh, the previous visit you made here and briefing us on it and, and everything. And of course, it's in the packet tonight and uh. You know, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions?
No.
I just wanted to ask you, are there, uh, what are with these? And it seems like minor modifications, if I tweaking of just to comply with, you know, the wording and, and what's kind of. Uh, what's requested right now, but, but nothing major, right? With the, everything stays pretty much the same as part of the plan?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, um, everything pretty much remains the same. Uh, the minor, the, the tweaks are very minor, which is why they didn't really have any major objections. Um, it does bring you into full compliance with state law, uh, uh, um, so that's the main objective here. So that. I know the council had uh, other items, including a agenda regarding annexation in the future. So this will uh, uh, help you proceed along on those other goals as well.
Okay, good. And are there any negative or potential, I, I guess? Hardships, hardships is a good word. Yes, that Councilman Bravo said of, of, you know, with this that we can anticipate with. In the next, I mean, this is twenty years, so would.
We do not expect anything uh, 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 in terms of hardship. Uh, in the beginning, we went through the evaluation process, we had to look at your population projection. And see if your land has carrying capacity to meet the projected growth. This is a standard requirement for any evaluation appraisal report. And the city does have the capacity to accommodate a projected growth as provided for uh, under uh, 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 the various state agencies or, or. Actually, we, we look at um, uh, uh, University of Florida projections and the state uh, uh, what we call Bieber, uh, uh, um. And so that was fine. Um, it, you know, the, the state uh, does require to review your comprehensive plan every seven years for another evaluation appraisal. So. Um, at some point, you're going to have to go through and update the data anyway. Uh, um, it's uh, done every seven years under state statutes. Um, and at that point, you would just have to reevaluate uh, based on your revised projected growth in the state and so forth. Um, all your data is already there. Um, and you can rely on the county transportation data uh, from the TPO. Of regarding your major road to meet your five and ten-year requirements. So it um, doesn't really add any cost in that regard. Um, so. Um, no, it's, you know, I don't know the longer explanation, but I wanted to be a.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
One last question. Uh, on the document under property right elements, um, I see that they have it highlighted and scratched out. It says the goal, uh, goal, the city of Miami Springs will make. Uh, planning and development decisions with respect to property rights. Okay, so it's just, actually, it's just a technical term. Will make decisions with respect to property rights and with respect for. People's rights to participate in decisions that will affect their life. Okay, there, ma'am.
Um, to, to, in, in regard to that, uh, um, the uh. Um, what we have previously presented in the first reading involved the word planning and development. Uh, this uh, direction to strike that. Addition and just so that it'll read, just read, the city of Miami Springs will make decisions with respect for property rights and respect for people's rights. To participate in decisions that affect their lives and property. This is resulting from the EO comment specifically to strike those three words. Um, to uh, for, for consistency with how the state statute has been construed.
But property rights in what sense? The city would make decisions on property rights in what sense? For building, for. Uh, government intervention? What is it?
The data is uh, asking for uh, in any, in, in any circumstance where you're making a uh, public policy decision that it considers. Uh, aspect of property rights and respect for people's rights. A part of that is really um, what that. A state statute had done is actually also enshrined the right to public commenting process and appeal process, which was already. Available without them adding that state statute to begin with. Um, so just like we had earlier, uh, open forum and the ability for folk to. Um, to, to come and have um, uh, 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 be able to voice their concerns or opinion during uh, a public comment. Um, that's just enshrined that right in the comprehensive plan that's already.
All right. Just wanted to make sure we weren't taking somewhere until we.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Eminem domain.
Yeah, that actually would want at the concern. I, I serve on the state board for uh, AP Florida. And actually, when we look at legislation every year and, and we have a lobbyist that goes through and, well, the first thing we saw when we started, it's like. It's just repetitive. We already enshrined all these rights in a public commenting and appeal processes and uh, that's just uh, provided a verbiage into specific comprehensive plans. Uh, uh, um, with a property right to.
Thank you. Yeah, I have one more question. It's more curious. Um, the, the reduction in water and oats from one fifty-five gallons to ninety-four recently, and I guessing a lot of that has to be with more efficient. You know, uh, I guess appliances, toilets and, and spouts and faucets and all. But is that number ninety-four? Is that um? Does that differ from cities in Miami-Dade County or is that pretty consistent for Miami-Dade County or South Florida? The ninety-four gallons per um, water per capita?
It varies from city to city, uh, because um, it, it really also depends on your local usage and it's broken down. Um, for example, we did keep it gained a couple of years ago and I think at one point it was like at one forty-four a person or something like that. Um, but also because they had leakage in their pipe and that's actually what the data also indicated. So, but until they fixed those, you were using more water per person. Uh, I would say that um, that it's a number to be proud of in, in the city because it shows that you all have really taken.
Significant reduction.
Exactly. Taking care for um, for, for uh, conserving water. Um, that's really something to be commended.
But I think even we can do less than that. When you think about it, I mean, we're down from one fifty-five gallons per person per day. To ninety-four, that's still a lot of water. You know, there's a lot of room there that, you know, we can all uh, hopefully. Um, without minor, uh, without major inconveniences, you know, adjusted and, and bring it down. Um. A good bit more, but so that varies within municipalities in Miami-Dade County and mainly because of this.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and compared to the rest of the state, do you know, is that number? How is that number?
I don't actually have that off the top of my head. I apologize. Uh, we do know that, that uh, um, the reduction of this type has, it, it's actually a good number. Um, wanted to remind the council that that this number is based on historical trend data. Um I want to remind the council that that this number is based on historical trend data. Um what we have to do is recommending to you any number, it's really based off of the county usage data and what they have seen. Um so this is something that's required for concurrency and stuff. We we want to make it a little buffer room in there as well. So your water usage should be around there, but we shouldn't really necessarily exceed it. In some places, you might have a standard and they're actually using just below that as well.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so um I'll open it for public hearing. Now, just in case there's anyone, even if you're not signed up, if there's anyone in the audience that was just to speak on these items, public hearing? No? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. All right.
C and D.
So Heidi, do you still need to read? More of these?
No, we should take a, there should be a motion on eight A and then a motion on eight B. Okay.
Can we do it at the same time or? Okay, uh through the chair, motion to move uh item eight A on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Behet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, I need a motion for um eight uh. Eight B?
Motion to move eight B.
There is any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Behet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes, the motion carries. Okay. We move on to the next item. You can read that.
Eight C. Eight, like I said earlier, eight C and eight D are companion items and the applicant and his counsel are here this evening. I think they wish to make a presentation so they can get started after I read the titles. Um the first ordinance is an ordinance in the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving a small scale comprehensive plan amendment to the city's future land use map, the Flum. From public facility to single family residential for a thirty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-one square foot plus or minus. Eight point eight-six acre parcel of property generally located at eleven oh one Ren Avenue. Providing authorization, providing for conflicts, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. And item eight D is a resolution of the city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving a tentative plat application by enclave at Miami Springs LLC. For property located at eleven oh one Ren Avenue, Folio number oh five thirty twenty-four zero one seven zero zero one zero. Providing for conditions, providing for violations, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date. Mayor and council, item eight C, as I mentioned, is an ordinance. This is second reading. Nothing has changed between first and second reading on this one. So I don't know if the applicant has more to add on that one, but. It is the same thing. I do have one correction on the effective date of the ordinance. It does need to be. Contingent on the effective date of the year that you just approved. So the year is effective. You've adopted it today. But it won't be effective until the state formally approves it. So. If item eight C passes this evening, it will not be effective. I'll add in language to the effective date section. It will not be effective until. Eight A is effective.
Through the, through the chair. So that part in the city comprehensive plan that they were approved on that now is changing hasn't, it hasn't changed. It's the same.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Uh the city comprehensive plan that we have, that what now we're amending to update it to what we just discussed. That part hasn't changed.
It's the part for for this, for this future land use map? No.
Okay.
So all that this application is requesting is a small scale map change. So we're. At at its simplest form, we're literally changing the color on the map.
Okay.
Okay, and then item eight D is a resolution and it's a ministerial. Um act, it's a tentative plat application to plat the property into four lots. The process for a tentative plat application is the applicant always needs to come to the city first. However, it will go to the county for review. Once the county reviews the tentative plat and provides their comments. It will come back to the city for final plat review. So you will see the applicant and his counsel here, I'm sure, at a future date. So I just want you to keep that in mind that most likely, assuming you approve the plat this evening, the tentative plat. You will have the final plat probably coming to you uh in the next year. So depending on how quickly. Ms. Tapanas can get things at the county. Yes, with that, I'll let her make her presentation.
Uh good evening, Melissa Tapanas, two hundred South Biscayne Boulevard, Miami. I'm here representing Enclave at Miami Springs LLC. The contract purchaser for the Optimus Club. We gave a full presentation at first reading. Uh we appreciate uh your adoption at first reading and consistent with your staff's recommendation. Of the future land use plan amendment, we would ask for your approval of um item eight C this evening. Um on item eight D, we appeared before your planning and zoning board. Uh we met with neighbors. We earned their recommendation. For approval, so we would respectfully request your approval this evening also for item eight D. We're available for any questions. Our architect and owner is here as well. Um and we thank you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve eight C and D.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second?
Let's do one at a time.
Okay.
We can take the motion.
Motion to approve C?
Second.
Eight C.
Okay, and second for eight C. Um any discussion? All right, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo? Yes, Councilman Behet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, is there a motion for eight D?
Motion to move eight D.
Okay, is there any discussion?
She did have the hearing, yeah. And there's no one, for for the record, there's no one wishing to speak on items eight C or eight D.
Right, for public hearing, yes. Thank you, Heidi.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the motion uh.
Bob motion second by Victor.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Behet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So go on. I guess.
You remember, Mike, you remember that uh to take the photo that we asked before y'all start. Carrying down our beloved Optimus Club.
Before and after.
A nice photo to remember, to remember it by.
Thanks, guys.
You.
So we're we're gonna run Hammond right through, right? It's gonna Hammond will just.
No, it will not. No.
The only thing that'll be is an alley.
Oh, they're gonna turn it. Oh.
It's gonna stay basically the same.
No, the alley's gonna run east west.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, right, yeah, but. You got a point.
I know, and it'll be smaller. I thought they were gonna present smaller alley.
Okay, um let's go to the next uh agenda item is uh nine consent agenda is there? We have three items on there. Does anyone have an item that they'd like to pull out for discussion, for separate discussion?
Mayor, I just want to make a correction on uh nine A. The not to exceed price is actually twenty-nine thousand eight fifty. Not thirty thousand nine hundred?
Twenty-nine eight fifty?
Twenty-nine eight fifty.
Okay.
Having recorded that, motion to move nine A, B, and C.
Second, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes, and for the record on item B, that was already approved for a grant. I just wanted to make a note of that.
That's a good point.
Record.
Good point.
Councilman Behet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mayor, can we get a clarification? Councilwoman Bravo?
Um cuz he moved to approve nine A, B, and C. Um I didn't ask for discussion, but I just wanted to say for the record that the appropriation grant and the amount of seven fifty, we had already discussed that and it was coming through a grant. So it's it's nothing new cuz it's a big ticket item. So I just wanted for the record, clarify that that was.
The pump replacement project, yes, for the hook square. Um it says it on here, approving a state funded grant agreement.
Yes.
With F um FD.
Some people don't read those.
Okay, okay. Just no problem. All right, um so let's, let's see, we don't have anything under old business. We um nothing under new business. Let's move to other business. We have an update on the annexation.
It's gonna do that.
Um so as you know, mayor and council, but for the community's benefit, on November first, the county commission heard. The city's application for annexation, along with the applications for the town of Medley, as well as Virginia Gardens. Um unfortunately, the hearing did not go as we had hoped. And the county commission did not approve the city's annexation on first reading. So at this time, um that's where it stands. And we hope to have the city's uh application. Considered by the county at some future date, but for right now. The annexation is not moving forward.
For the third time.
Bottom line is.
Twenty years.
We're still kicking.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, and I think I think William, William, you speak, that that's something very some salient because. You know, we've we've rebounded from this before and um. And 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 future councils will do it again, I'm sure, you know, because it's just, it makes so much sense. The problem in my, in my humble opinion is that. You're 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 asking these businesses to accept, and this is where it's in, seems to be in the minds of all the anti-annexation people. Um including some on the commission, uh is that you're 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 causing these businesses to. Raise their taxes like unconscionably higher than what it is now. And what do we have to offer? To to to, you know, kind of bend them and make them. And I know that that William and and staff is and and the mayor, especially, you've worked awful hard on this, I know.
A lot of mayors and a lot of.
Well, a lot, a lot of mayors, but I'll, but I'll, but I'll say, I'll say right here and now that I think you've done a heck of a lot more than any other mayor I've seen since I've been sitting up here. And uh to your credit, but that that's that's really the crux of the matter, the fact that you have to, you're you're gonna be taxing people. At a much higher level. Now, what's the counter to that? Um the county has not accomplished what they really wanted to accomplish, have they? Because that enclave still exists. I mean, V G's gonna benefit, Melly's gonna benefit.
But man, we're, we're still kicking, so we'd need to let it play out.
Yeah, right, but I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Stack it up so that folks understand that um that this is not an easy thing to pull off. And uh we're gonna have to, you know, reach into our bag of tricks and come up with something going forward and I. And I'm I'm certain that. Bring it back up.
Through the chairs, huh?
Yes, sir.
Having uh what do you call it? Uh lift the fight again, I think something like that is is the same. There there are some uh serious obstacles to 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 our project, but. Um next week, um they're going to swear in, I think it's six new county commissioners.
Right.
And in two years. A lot of the ones that are there now, so it's, listen, it's, you know, we twenty years, okay, so, you know. Um it's it's um. We still have options. Now, we have options in the immediate sense, if ever if someone, you know, comes up and says, uh, you know, the folks that voted N A and say. I'd like to uh, you know, reintroduce this, the likelihood of that is probably slim, but um but we have options.
Yes.
And and I think that it's important that uh as soon as possible uh. There'd be a meeting with county commissioner, with the new county commissioner. Uh with, you know, mayor and whomever needs to have a conversation, no? So anyway, but anyway, conversations need to be had and they need to continue going, right? So if we can get by some miracle, November fifteen, something really truly interesting happens in our favor, that'd be great, but um.
Let's let it play out.
Let it play out, let it ride, as they say in the casino.
Thank you, Heidi, for the update. Um let's see, the next agenda item is the request to fill the vacancy employee pension board.
Yes, that uh vacancy uh still remains. I believe it was brought up around August. If you have any recommendations. Has to be a resident of the city and it needs to be approved by council.
How often do they meet?
Quarterly. So their last meeting was November second or fourth, I believe. Um so the next meeting, as I just mentioned, would be March.
Erica, isn't that a group thing or?
Pension board?
A certain, a group makes the recommend, no?
No, it's it's a council nomination by council and approved by council.
Okay.
Not not a specific.
Okay. So we're looking for recommendations.
Yeah. Thanks.
From us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um all right, so if anyone knows or if anyone is listening and would like to step in and help with this, um we'd be uh. Very appreciative. Um we need, we have a vacancy in the employee pension board. And it's a quarterly meeting, so it's uh shouldn't be too time consuming. Um and if anyone's interesting, interested, reach out to any of us. Our emails and our contact information is on our website, on our um. Uh social media or reach out to Erica or the city manager. There's a lot of ways to to reach any of us.
Through through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Is there uh? I don't wanna say job description, but I mean, they're, ki- what kind of people are we looking for? What kind of person?
I want to say live body. I know, more than that.
Well, I I I just, just by looking at. You know, just by. How alive does the body have? Well, you know, I I I come, I come, I come from a institutionalized world, right? Where these things are titles and 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 you're always looking for people with some experience.
In this case, it's someone willing to serve for this, right? On behalf of a resident and willing to serve and interested in, in, you know, in assisting with employee pension. Which is, you know, our employees are, you know, clearly one of our most valuable assets, along with our residents and, you know, and our beautiful um. Uh community, so.
Don't look at Fred.
Yes. Don't look at Fred. Okay, um so let's move on to reports and recommendations from our city attorney.
None this evening, mayor.
Hey, city manager?
I I have a couple of things, uh mayor. Um just want to remind everyone that the uh collection of Thanksgiving food items. Uh for the Lotus House uh ends this Wednesday. So if anyone has any uh food donations, they can come to the city hall lobby and uh place them there. So Wednesday will be the last day for that. Um I also uh Tuesday, tomorrow, November fifteenth. Uh we're gonna have the uh Community Shred Day at the Community Center from four P M to seven P M. Uh Wednesday, November sixteenth, is the final meeting of the Business and Economic Development Task Force at six P M here in council chambers. Thursday, November seventeenth, the Miami Springs uh Satellite Museum ribbon cutting at the uh. Uh Adult Community Center. That's uh from six thirty to eight thirty. Uh also on Saturday, November nineteenth, the One Blood Mobile will be at the Community Center from ten A M to five P M. Uh that's the same day that uh on Saturday, the thirteen panama turkey trot, five K uh walk run starts at seven A M from the Community Center. Need to register at the uh Miami Springs Community Center as soon as possible because tickets are going fast. And then uh Sunday, November twenty-seventh, is our tree lighting ceremony on the circle at six P M. Pictures with Santa, wristbands are not required. Uh so uh that will be uh Sunday, November twenty-seventh. Also, the uh playground at Reagan Park is uh almost complete. I don't know if you've seen it. They put the uh surface on it. It really looks nice. We still have to put some sod and all that. Uh so we're projecting probably sometime next week or the week after, we'll have a nice ribbon cutting. Over there for that uh park. Also, I'm Charlie's not here anymore, but um the Rotary Club and Charlie Leonard. Offered uh to uh get some Christmas trees, lit Christmas trees to put in the two blocks. Of Westward that we're currently have the trees. Uh these are small Christmas trees that can be put in between to uh make it uh, so we're working with Public Works on that. So that's gonna make that area look uh a little better. So I wanna thank Charlie and the Rotary Club for that. And um also um. Omar and Manny Fabian have been in conversations about the um. Uh pickleball over at the tennis courts. And uh Manny, I guess, has seen the um the significant interest in pickleball, so he's uh. He's agreed to uh do about four or two, two pickleball courts.
Which is one tennis.
Over there.
One tennis.
Right, so at least we can get something going. In the meantime, while we do, we look at a permanent solution down the line, so. So that's gonna come. So I wanna thank Manny for that. Um and finally, um I want to say a few words about Victor. You know, it's been in the last nineteen months, I've really enjoyed our conversations. Uh I appreciate the insight you have on certain issues. Um you know, we may not always agree on everything, but at least we communicate. And uh I'm gonna miss that. So I wanna wish you and your family the best and whatever you do in the future. And I wanna thank you for your time with the city.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
That's all I have, man.
Okay. Absolutely. All right, so um let's see, since this is your last meeting, would you like to be first or last?
Let me go last.
Okay.
I go back to a familiar, familiar position.
The best for first?
Well, we can do that this time. Um I I I'm not gonna. Go into that again, Victor. I've already said what I said about your time up here and and how much I've appreciated and valued it. Uh so I'll leave it at that. Um I did wanna take maybe four, three or four minutes of your time tonight and and my time allotted to me uh to read what I uh had to say. uh, to read what I, uh, had to say, the remarks I made on Veterans Day. Yes. Some of you, uh, were out of town and couldn't make it and stuff, but, and, uh, but, so I'll do that tonight if it's okay. Good morning and welcome to our veterans and their families and all in attendance here on this November eleventh. As we in some small way convey homage to all the armed forces through the pages of history. The armed forces who were, are, and willing, and will be at our nation's becking call, beckon call to defend these United States, non-respective of the odds of engagement. We as a nation throughout the decades have stood the course of time in building, maintaining, and deploying a fighting force, second to none. A fighting force adept in training, technology, vigilance, and camaraderie not known through the ages. We all have some grasp as to the politics of international conflict. We have lived our roughly last century plus encompassing most of all the great conflicts our republic has borne. We have lived to see the results. We have lived to view the consequences, both good and bad. Consequences that lived before our very eyes today, albeit Arlington National Cemetery, the Miami VA, or homeless colonies populated by veterans with nowhere to go. My dear friends, on this day, may we contemplate as a community, as a state, and as a nation, for just five minutes, the overall jeopardy of our veterans. This is not too much for me to ask. As US veterans, let us also honor the brave men and women of the Ukraine who have beat back unconscionable odds in defense of their homeland. Behind the scenes, once again, the United States military has made its presence felt in support of democracy. We have in fact made it abundantly felt to the detriment of the oppressor. Now, let us turn our attention to an attribute of the US military often not fathomed, or addressed, or appreciated, and that is training. Countless tens of millions of dollars are allocated in the business of preparing GIs for their professional destinies and careers. As a result, we arguably field the finest, best-trained cohesive fighting force the world has ever known. And it's not only combat training, it's medical, aerospace, civil engineering, cyber technologies, National Guard contingencies, law enforcement, and firefighting, and many more, too, too numerous for me to mention here. These young men and women post-discharge carry this training and discipline with them and serve as a major foundation to the private sector while bridging into civilian life. Let us further petition Congress to abate the suffering of our wounded warriors, both physically and psychologically, as well as the disposition of POWs, not to this day fully resolved. Finally, good people, let us acknowledge the good work of the service clubs, of the American Legion, VFW, and others in their lobbying effort in support of our veterans. Engage our vets in everyday life, not with the traditional adage, quote, "Thanks for your service," unquote, but with a more endearing sentiment being, "We are with you." Thank you for joining us here this morning.
Very, very nice. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Always. I'm sorry, I was out of town. Um, I always look forward to, to, um, our Veterans Day and Memorial Day.
And, and I should. Thank you very much. I should, I should, I should add that, um, and the Lions Club on Saturday night put a dinner on, they do, which they do every year. And it's, 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 it's not a smorgasbord, or, you know, or you go up and get your the, the members at Alliance Club stand around the perimeter of the room, and all the veterans are seated, and they go one table at a time and ask, you know, what, what outfit were you in and what did you do and all that, and that is the coolest part of the ceremony that they do for us. And then they serve us dinner. We don't even get up. Very cool, very, very appreciated, uh, what they do for us.
Nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilwoman Bravo?
That was very, very beautiful, Bob Best. I'm gonna miss your, your speeches when, um, you're no longer sitting next to me. I don't know if I'll be here, but I'm gonna miss that anyways.
We'll call him back.
Yes, we're gonna call you back just for that.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be an honor. It would.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to congratulate Kevin on his win for city commissioner. Looking forward to working with him. Sorry, county commissioner. Uh, I wanted to say thank you to Victor. Um, it has been a pleasure working with you. You are very, a very amicable person, uh, always there for good constructive criticism. You're a very professional man, and it, it was really nice getting to know you a little bit better and working with you. So I, um, I hope you, I hope, uh, the future has many beautiful things for you, and you, you never know, you, you might, we might continue, so.
Especially beautiful.
Oh. Um, so, let's see here, what else? I was really glad to see Fred come today from the Recreation Commission. Um, I know that you're trying, where all, all of our schedules are really hard sometimes. I felt very guilty, guilty waking up late on, on Friday and not being able to make it to the veterans', um, ceremony. I was working till super, super late the night before. I have literally three jobs. And, um, I wanted to make it and I didn't, so thank you for my fellow councilmen and women that, that were there um, to show some respect.
Thank you.
Um, I'm looking forward to see, oh, I had a question, William. Fred had mentioned something, uh, that it would be probably, well, that's, that's for Lee, that's not, it's a beloved area, that's office work. Um, that's it. I'm glad to hear that we are going to work a medium, so we make our country club a sports center for pickleball. That would be so fun. Can't wait to see it temporarily at the tennis courts, and, um, we'll see how packed it gets. So that'll show some proof of a, of a drive that's, that's needed. I know Tropical Park has, I don't know, um, they have a lot of pickleball courts over there now. I, I have to go and give it a shot, you know, when I have five minutes of my life that I can enjoy, I don't know. Um, so that's it. Thank you for, uh, constructive meeting, and I hope that, um, everything goes well with annexation. Um, we leave it up to God, and there's a solution for everything. Could be now, could be later, but I don't think it's something that we need to stress so hard, cuz it's not science, sealed, and delivered. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Bahad?
Okay, so, uh, just wanted to say thank you to my colleague, uh, here, to my, my left, my wingman. Uh, thank you for your service. You truly served. Um, you always had, uh, you always lent an ear to residents and, and, uh, and you worked, uh, and, uh, and, and you truly, uh, served. Uh, you worked really hard. I think you're in it for the right reasons, and, uh, I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Uh, just a couple of short things. Number one.
Hey, I wanna say it one more time, Vice Mayor.
That's right.
Vice Mayor.
Appreciate that. Um, uh, you know, all the discussions we've had up here about pickleball and, you know, how it's spreading in the country, so two Saturdays ago, I don't know where I was going, but I was crossing the bridge to drive somewhere, and I, you know, the light stopped, so traffic stopped. I'm looking at the building, you know? And all of a sudden, and I'm, you know, full disclosure, I'm a big National Public Radio fan, so I got that on. Pickleball was on National Public Radio, so it's really, it's really, uh, crossed a lot of spectrum of communities in this country, and I was pleased to hear they did a really nice job, uh, about pickleball. Um, the second thing is on Veterans Day, um, it really was, I mean, we, we always get good events, but this one had a something about it that was special. Um, wasn't full as we've had in other occasions. We had a beautiful day, first of all. You know, we've had those days with drizzle and rain. Um, the participation of the Boys and Girl Scouts was extraordinary. There must have been
Certainly.
Close, I, it, it, in my mind, it seemed like there were like forty of them.
Right.
You know, the tiny ones, the tallest ones.
Yeah.
Um, and, and especially to see, um, 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 Benjamin, uh, Gorden, who is a, you know, was, was a Cub Scout with Victor, and, and, uh, and is now an Assistant Scoutmaster. You know, to see him grow into that and, and, um, the leadership, right, the leadership, uh, um, and the work with the Boy Scouts and how many Cub Scouts were there and, and, and Boy Scouts. Um, it was really, and I said that in some words that I, I mentioned about how, what a wonderful feeling that we're having this great celebration um, with some of the elders and some of the youngest members of our community
Right.
About the importance of patriotism and civic participation, and, um, uh, you know, when I got there, I just, I'm always early.
Yeah.
But, uh, this time I got there a little bit earlier than Bob and, and started talking to a couple of people, and like two ladies said, well, where's Bob Best? There's no Veterans Day without Bob Best, and up he pulls up in his, uh, Air Force shirt. And so, uh, I, I appreciate Bob's always, uh, you know, that anchoring, uh, the event. Uh, I met two young men, uh, veterans from Afghanistan and Iraq who live in Miami Springs and did not know about our celebration. So, uh, I was really endeared to, to, you know.
And they came?
And they were there. They, they said, they saw all the flags and they stopped. Well, that's what happens when you're a veteran, right?
Right.
Right.
And they got out, you know, they parked and they, they came up to me, you know, at separate, uh, ones, and, um, uh, one I had seen before, uh, but I didn't know he was a veteran, and, uh, you know, I welcomed him and I said, Les, you know, this is what we do. Um, um, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, we're always here to honor, so it was great to, to meet them. And, and then that, uh, the, the evening, um, the Saturday evening dinner, uh, at the Lions Club, again, packed house.
Yeah.
And I had the fortune of sitting next to a young woman who is an Afghanistan veteran. Um, I, I thought, I swear she looked like she was in her twenties, but that probably in her thirties. She's been in the Army fourteen years.
She did two tour, two tours, too.
Two tours in Afghanistan and, and grew up in, uh, in, uh, uh, Virginia Gardens, graduated high school at Miami Springs. Um, she is, uh, she is a Veterans Administration Federal Officer. And on reserve duty in Homestead. I did not know there was an, uh, Army garrison down there. Really, really interesting, uh, very nice conversation. I met her mom, and, uh, it was, it was, it was wonderful to see that generation of veterans, so I'm always proud of the fact that we do such a beautiful event, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Man, I, 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 you know, we, we, we do it in our own way. We don't have a lot of flash, but we got a lot of substance. And, um, and, and everyone that I talked to, you know, thanked us for doing this, and, um, and those homemade, uh, cupcakes, carrot.
Yeah.
Cheese, Philly cheese.
Is that what you went for?
They were great. I only had one, but, uh, but they were great, and, um, uh, you know, one of the scout moms and, and, um, Bob knows her best. Uh, Marie, who's there, she's with the Girl Scouts, and she does a lot of support, and her daughter is a third-year student in Annapolis, the Naval Academy, and just getting ready to, to select her officership and, and to move on to, to represent us as well. So we got a lot of good stuff here. And, and, and Veterans Day and Memorial Day are really, uh, important times to kind of bring it back home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do the chair. I'm sorry, I don't wanna, I just, you said that we, 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 our ceremonies are not big, but I know what the word is, they're intimate.
Oh, yeah, no, they're intimate and substantive.
Yes, well, and then I think you leave, it's, you know, it's, you're touched when you attend our ceremonies.
Unfortunately, you know, we've been, I've been attending them so long that we've, uh, we've lost some veterans.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
World War II veterans.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to say again, uh, Councilman Vasquez, um, Vice Mayor Vasquez, um, it's, you know, an honor and, uh, privilege to have served with you here on the council. Um, I, I know I speak on behalf of our Miami Springs residents, how appreciative they are of, um, of your service, but also you're, you know, that you're just very approachable and interested in, in their needs and, and making our community better. Um, and, uh, again, um, it's been an honor, um, serving with you, having you here. But I also wanted to say, um, just listening to our conversation today, and I know sometimes our meetings are pretty contentious, you know? And everyone's a little, you know, at the end of the meeting, a little, right, today, um, you know, uh, I think we all, uh, had a, a different mood, I guess, uh, because the items that we were discussing weren't that contentious, but, um, just listening, I, you know, it's thanks, it's uh, November Thanksgiving, and I'm so grateful. I just wanna give thanks, um, to the honor and the pleasure of serving with all of you here, um, with our city attorney, with our clerk, with our city manager, who, um, is just, um, you know, the hard times that I think, I know I give him a hard time, and I can imagine, you know, getting it from an ID too. It's, it's gotta be really hard. Um, but I'm just really grateful. I think, um, it represents, I'm grateful for our community, you know, just the privilege and the blessing that somehow we were dropped right here in Miami Springs, um, that we're part of this community and listening to, um, just with the Veterans Day, which happens to be now in November, and with the Lions Club, one of our civic clubs of, of the five, you know, major civic clubs that we have here, you know, the Lions, um, the Lions, the Women's Club, the Rotary Club, the Optimist Club, and the Scouts. These civic clubs that are just, they provide, other cities don't have those kind of civic clubs. The civic clubs in other cities are like one or two members that are holding it together, and ours, despite that, keep growing, um, and, and serving our community, and, um, it's just, um, a blessing to be part of this community, to have the, um, honor and the privilege to serve. Um, I know we all feel the same way here on the council, so, um, for that, I wanna wish everyone a very, very happy Thanksgiving. Take care.
Thank you.
How are you when you came?
I know. How are you?
Good, and you?
Good.